We're going to call the meeting in order. Are you recording, Mary?
Yes.
Okay. First off, I want to call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen in order. Today is Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. Time now is 7:04 PM. Let's please begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, everyone. Can everybody hear me in the back? Excellent. So just something here for housekeeping. This is an in-person meeting. We are recording it. We're broadcasting online, but we're not doing hybrid. So anybody online is not going to be participating today. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that and anybody who's online on there right now understands as well. We're going to begin with the public comments here in a second, but you know, it's important to acknowledge a couple of things. First off, I think I'm speaking on behalf of the board when we say we're glad you're here. When we started talking about this a couple of weeks ago and we knew some folks wanted to turn out, we opened this up for public comment, and there is nothing better than having free speech in a town meeting for public comment. Now, I know there's a lot of confusion about what we're trying to do too. I'll tell you one thing, that when we get to the agenda item, this is not something that covers impromptu protests. If there is a news article or something that comes out, everybody still has their right to freedom of speech. We're talking about, you know, what we're doing for planned events on Town Broadway. Okay, so should everybody understands that because, because I'm a military veteran. Select my straight and military veteran, veteran, and Brian Tursey, career law enforcement. All of us have sworn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All of us have a sworn oath to protect the Constitution. And there's nothing more important than our freedom of speech and our freedom to assemble. So you understand that's not where we're going here today. And that's why we're grateful we're going to have a lot of people speaking up and we're better. This is a chance for all of us to talk about this. So we're glad you're here. We're going to get started now. There's a lot of people who want to speak. We had a lot of signups. So we're going to plan for an hour of public comment. And we're going to plan, we want everybody limited their comments to three minutes or try, right? Please don't just repeat something somebody else said. Like if you've got something you need to add and you want to speak, please stand up and go for it. If you want to applause each other, go for it. Now, I would say don't do it too long because people get up there and it does take time out of the meeting. Let's keep it moving. Everybody who can speak has a chance. We good with that? Let me hear it. Well, we have to get through this. We have a long, long, long agenda tonight. Okay, so we're going to try for an hour and see where we end. Let's see where we are in an hour. But listen, we have the right of the town for our meeting to control the amount of time. We do, because we have a lot of work to get done. That is important. This is a public comment, it's important, but it's not absolute. So we are able to limit the time so everybody gets a chance to talk. So let's move on. Let's move on and try to talk and get everybody up here. So I'm going to call the Bethel residents first, right? So I have a list here. Actually, this kind of work?
It hasn't opened yet.
No, if you, now if you want to sit. Okay, I was actually going to say if people need to rotate too. Like if you're having problems, we don't have as many chairs, maybe switch out with somebody. You know, it's going to be.
Public comment.
This is public comment. It's not an opportunity for us to go back and forth, right? If you want to stay for the agenda item, that's fine, right? But I'm saying this, this is all about ensuring that everybody has the freedom of speech and to assemble safely. That's what this is. It doesn't affect somebody's impromptu ability to protest. But this is not a debate. No, please, no. No, we're going to, this isn't back and forth. We want every chance to talk. You know what? This is, this is a public. Hey, listen, we're going to, if we're going to get off, if we're going to get off track right from the beginning, I'm not going to have an opportunity to do this. So let's, let's everybody work together on this. All right? So first off, I have Hannah Littman on the list. And next up will be Al Sutcher.
Hello. Testing. I'm Hannah Littman. I live at Forty Kingswood Drive in Bethel. I've been proud to call Bethel since 1997. While we can't control the divisions happening across our nation, we can come together here as one town, one community made up of people with different beliefs, opinions, and experiences. It's always been that way in Bethel. We've agreed, disagreed, debated, and we still waved at each other in Carol Louises. We picked out books together and birds books. We, you know, went to the post office and shared stories about our kids. Got vegetables at the farmer's market and all of that. So that's what makes this a lovely town. Our ability to stay neighbors even when we see things differently. Our freedom of speech and right to gather and protest peacefully are foundational to who we are as Americans and as Bethel residents. I understand the town's need for permits or insurance as gatherings grow. I mean, I know we have insurance for the tree lighting, right? And there's a lot of people there and I understand that. We want to protect the people. We want to protect the town. It's about keeping people safe and protecting our community. That makes sense. What's important though, is that these requirements don't become barriers that delay or discourage people from peacefully expressing themselves. Perhaps there's an opportunity to identify alternative spaces somewhere with more room, better visibility, and safety for all. At the same time, I want to acknowledge something else that matters deeply to me. Our local businesses. Bethel's businesses are precious. Most are owned by our neighbors, by people who care deeply about this town. If businesses are suffering or afraid to speak up for fear of being boycotted or canceled, that's, that's not who we are. We need to find a way to protect both our First Amendment rights and the livelihoods of those who make Bethel thrive. These are tough economic times and we can help each other. It starts with respect on all sides. Listening, caring, and remembering that we're part, all part of the same small town. Some may call me wacky or say I'm not living in reality. Someone said when I was telling them how I felt, seriously? And I can assure you, I am as serious as a heart attack.
Well, let's touch the 182 Greenwood Avenue. First thing I'd like to mention is thank you all for putting the sidewalks on the agenda for tonight because I have been one of a small chorus that has been begging for it for a long time. So thank you in advance for, for doing that. Secondly, I'd like to mention that I have a letter that was turned into you all. I hope you got a chance to read it. It is a letter that has been submitted for the record, but I thought it was well enough written that you want to, that some other people here might like to hear it as well. It's written by Matthew S. Nickerbacher on October 7th, 2025. To Bethel's First Selectmen Dan Carter and the Bethel Board of Selectmen. Gentlemen, I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting of the Board of Selectmen at which I've been informed that the Board intends to consider some form of permanent arrangements concerning the use, permitting arrangement concerning the use of PT Barnum Square. So I'm offering these comments in advance of the meeting. While no details have been released by the First Selectmen's Office concerning the proposed restriction, it is my understanding that the proposal includes a requirement that any group of individuals who intend to gather at this location would be required to obtain a permit and show group insurance four weeks prior to gathering. If my understanding of this proposal is correct, it is being crafted on the most extremely far-fetched and dubious legal reasonings, I will address those that I am aware of below. One, the Saturday morning rallies are organized and sponsored by a group to which the same rules should be applied as when the Chamber of Commerce applies to use, to use the area for commercial purposes. The response to that statement is the rallies are not sponsored by any organized group or organization. The so-called Bethel Blues is simply a social media page set up by a private individual for the purpose of communicating to the community. There is no discreet membership, no fundraising. It is not registered as a political action committee or any other formal arrangement. Additionally, the proposal lacks a definition of an event that constitutes a quote-unquote group. If two people show up, is that a group? Is it five or 10? If this is to be considered a group who is responsible for the permit of obtaining insurance, will this requirement be imposed on the local restaurant that has been routinely placing picnic tables on Town Broadway? Secondly, the use of this public space creates a liability risk that justifies personal insurance requirement. The response to that is this is untrue. The town of Bethel is not only adequately insured under its standard liability and property insurance policies, municipalities and demicent are also protected with a high level of government immunity under state law. The only way this immunity can be lost is if it can be proved that the municipality was clearly and grossly negligent in upholding public property or was found in a court of law who has deliberately violated an individual's civil rights. As a side note, it may be legally allowable to pro give an individual's correctance a structure on town property such as a tent or an awning. But a gathering of citizens on public property that is intended for use by the public poses no additional or unusual liability risk whatsoever. Additionally, most insurance companies will not provide coverage for political events. Imposing this requirement sets up a condition that would make it impossible for citizens to exercise their right to peaceably gather under the Bill of Rights. This proposal can only be viewed for what it clearly is, an attempt to deny Bethel citizens their constitutionally guaranteed right to gather and demonstrate. To date, these peaceful rallies have generated no controversies, no confrontations, even when counter protesters have attended, have not impeded pedestrian or vehicular traffic in any way. Comments have been made that the rallies have disputed area businesses, have disrupted area businesses. This is a highly doubtful claim. I personally have seen no evidence to support. Rally participants have routinely patronized Bethel's many coffee shops and restaurants going forward following each rally. Regardless, I know of no language in the First Amendment that allows peaceful protests to be restricted if they happen to be inconvenient for others or because others don't like or disagree with the messaging. In short, imposing any restriction on our citizens legally, permissible use the town green will be viewed as a direct assault on their First Amendment rights. It also creates a significant risk of triggering. It also creates a significant risk of triggering an expensive lawsuit against the town. I urge you in the most strenuous terms possible that this Board not impose any restrictions on the citizen's use of public town property. Sincerely yours, Matthew Nickerbacher.
Nancy Ryan, 25 Ballantyne Road. The first item under Old Business on tonight's meeting is the consideration of application process and required insurance for PT Barnum Square. I find this interesting in that as part of the meeting documents, there was a new application for municipal center properties or spaces, just like if someone wanted to use this space or wanted to use the front lawn. PT Barnum Square has been added to that application. It's at the Park and Rec page on the town website. There's several applications there, one for power park, one for outdoor spaces, one for municipal center. PT Barnum Square has been added to the municipal center application. So then, I think what I would like to see is during the discussion under Old Business, they have the Board of Selectmen, let us know, the townspeople, what's, what is going to be the process? What is going to be, is it a permit that's going to be required? Is it a reservation? Is it for an event? What constitutes an event? Is it the number of people that show up? Is it the time that the people are in whichever space they're occupying? So we need to know those things. And who's going to check into this? And if a permit is required, because it has to be posted somewhere. I know that the application, as I've had to fill them out before, says that Park and Rec would like to receive that at least four weeks in advance and take about two weeks to make sure that the person wanting to have the event has time to know whether they can use the place or not. I understand Park and Rec needing to keep track of a lot of the spaces so you don't have, and same with Board of Ed with school properties, et cetera, fields or whatever. You can't have 10 soccer teams over on this field and no one over there. You've got to have some sort of a way to have spaces utilized properly. But what I'm going to ask again in your discussion is to also let us know who, what, what constitutes an event? What, who is going to need to get either a permit or a reservation, whatever you want to call it? If I decide, or if I have been already, going every Thursday after work with seven of my friends down to McCowherd Park to play basketball, am I going to need a permit for that? Am I going to need to fill out something? If I'm going every Saturday morning at 9:50 to the wonderful new playground up at Rockwell School with a bunch of parents and grandparents with our kids and grandkids to have playdates and to let, you know, the kids play so they don't have, you know, because we're in a condo, we don't have a place for the kids to play outside. What we need to know, what's, if I'm going out 5 o'clock in the morning and sitting on the municipal center lawn with three people and doing yoga, am I going to need a permit or something for that? So I'm hoping that the Board of Selectmen is going to let us know what constitutes an event, who's going to need a permit, and how we're going to kind of take care of that. Thank you for your time.
And next up will be Ralph Stone. Robin Dowding, then Ralph Stone.
Hi, everybody. My name is Robin Dowding. I'm at 104 Chestnut Ridge Road. I'm a Bethel resident, have been for over 25 years. I, right now, do not have any comment because I don't know what the town is going to propose. But I do want to see a permit and application, CLI, required for the use of that piece of property, just like we have for the other pieces of property in town that are town reeds. We are not taking away anybody's right for free speech. We're just saying there needs to be a process.
Ralph Stone, and then after that's Renee Ruska.
So again, we don't have a lot of information about what we're planning, but.
Ralph Stone, we call him. Normally when people get up and say their name.
We have it, so thank you. These things, I don't necessarily want to know where I live. This seems to me a solution in search of a problem. People have peacefully demonstrated for now untold weeks, yes at the same time, yes in the same place, without any issue. I hear that two businesses have played. I'd like to see more about that. But to me, there is no problem with people peacefully assembling on the same piece of property, town owned or whatever, without causing any disruption. Yeah, there are other people who would like to protest there perhaps. This is not a group, because many people want to be there. We all get along in Bethel. We all try to get along. If you remember a few weeks ago, there was an incident in Carol Louises. I talked to you about this in your office. I don't think that ended up being, it didn't get blown up into a whole thing where, you know, people had to like somehow pick sides. We don't have to pick sides. We're all on the same side. Freedom of speech is the First Amendment. Permitting, expecting to have permits to assemble, express, to express opinions is against the First Amendment. The idea to have insurance. The idea of insurance is against all court law. It said, the council needs not need separate insurance for political or other protests. What are you insuring? The grass, we'll plant new grass, that's the issue. That's better than that Nickerbacher said it, and we miss it. But I, I just, again, a solution without a problem. If it becomes a problem, then I can see maybe there's something you want to do. Permitting, expecting insurance, asking for like six weeks, eight weeks notice, unnecessary. By the way, if you only, if you only want to allow protests for immediate problems, we have an immediate problem every day in this country.
It is Renee Ruska. I'm here to speak and support free speech in Bethel without the institution of fees or permits. I have been blessed to call Bethel my home since 2009. We moved away for a few years in 2012. I've lived in large cities such as North Hartford, Bridgeport, and Norwich, areas where I did not have the privilege of a beautifully kept area when a daughter and I gathered with other families without fearing for our safety. I longed for home and to me, Bethel was home. I returned in 2016 and was embraced by a warm, compassionate community that has supported me in my family in times of joy and crisis. After living in so many different communities, I can share from experience that Bethel has always felt like a place of kindness, warmth, tolerance, and freedom. No matter who you are or where you are from, you are welcome here. At least, that is how I used to feel. The dynamic has begun to shift so drastically these last few months and it saddens me. From fights in our town parks to shockers harassed in stores, the welcoming energy has descended into division. Now more than ever, we must hold on to our core principles. If they are lost, then who have we become? The square is for the very purpose of gathering, and this is done in many ways. Some meet at the benches for causing a conversation. Some enjoy a daily jog through town. I see many with blankets enjoying lunch. Will everyone have to start reserving times and applying for permits and insurance? Bethel is one of two Connecticut towns fortunate to have the spirit of the American Doughboy movement. Standing at the foot of the Doughboy each week, defending one of those core principles, my freedom of speech has its own purpose, which I fear has been forgotten. It's not only to honor our fallen World War I soldiers, but to carry on their mission, the courage and perseverance to fight for our freedom. But what is a war if not protest?
Laura? On here? Oh, there she is. And then next up will be Kathy Shaver.
I'm real daily, ladies and gentlemen. I've been a resident of this town most of my life. I graduated Bethel High School in 1995. I came back here when I divorced my first husband to raise my children here, who have both also gone through and graduated Bethel High School. I have been out here photographing these protests about 26 of the last 31 weeks. Now, I joined the cause because I was reading people saying things that I just knew to be untrue about my fellow Bethelites. I have been taking pictures of Treat Street, Beer Fest, Chamber Gatherings, Memorial Day parades, your small business, for the better part of the last 20 years. And this is a part of our history and this is a part of the story of the town of Bethel. We have always been really good at community. I fear that out of an abundance of fear and caution for things that have not happened yet, you are going to destroy an opportunity here and you are going to destroy our ability to be and create our own community. I understand there have been two sides there. And some really great conversations have come out of that. This isn't the problem that you needed today. I would have to agree with the gentleman before who said this is a problem or a solution in search of a problem. Thank you.
Not my area of expertise, clearly. How about that? Okay, so just to begin, I'd like to share a quote about public squares from Citizens for Life, which is a branch of the Justice Sandero Potter Institute. Because PT Barnum Square is our Bethel's public square. Quote, "Public squares are symbols of freedom and democracy and people use them as places to voice their opinions and influence the political process. Leaders would and do often give speeches and debates in public squares to talk about important political issues. Public squares also provide a platform for public discourse and debate, allowing citizens to exchange ideas, listen to the views of others, and engage in respectful dialogue. This helps to promote an informed and engaged citizenry, which is essential for the functioning of a democratic society." Unquote. This past weekend, I was on our town square doing just what is described in that quote. We all gathered peacefully. Counter protesters talked to each other and allowed each other to express opposing views without incident. Putting up barriers to what town squares are meant to be by restricting when, how, and by whom the space can be used is anti-democratic and a chilling attempt to lead an offensive event. That people would need to get a permit weeks in advance every time they want to gather, buy insurance for the privilege, and pay additional fees if they decide to stay longer than requested is outrageous. If you approve this unnecessary change, it will stifle free speech and the right to protest. The use of our town square will be limited to those who can notify the town in advance and can afford to pay the insurance fees. If they can't acquire or afford insurance, tough luck on free speech. And that is also true.
Please keep your comments down, whichever.
And why is this being proposed now? PT Barnum Square has been a part of the town since 1881 and the town's insurance already covers its use. If I walk across the square and trip and fall, the town already is insured for that. So why do protests and rallies need a permit? Is the goal to take our public square and restrict its use so that no one can easily use it? Or is it just to restrict the use for speech that some people don't like? What we can decide on this issue impacts our town, but the broader issue of whether we live in a democratic society. We stood at the start of this meeting and recited the Pledge of Allegiance. When we say with liberty and justice for all, is it just performative? Or do we really mean to preserve those liberties that this flag represents? Or do we only protect the liberties of those who agree with us? We need to decide what kind of town we want to be, and I hope it's one that values democracy and respects the Constitution and the Third Amendment. and respects the Constitution and the fair competition.
No, I've been catching, keeping time, obviously. Fair enough.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jonathan Phillips and I live at Nine More Road. For the past thirty weeks, I've attended defending Mark McEwan's P T Barnum Square. I'd like to share four priorities I believe the town should keep front of mind as it considers any permit or insurance requirements for political rallies. First are constitutional rights. The First Amendment guarantees the right to assemble, to speak, and to petition our government. Those rights aren't conditional on sponsorship. It's clear this proposal arises in reaction to citizens repeatedly exercising their rights, and that's about as un-American as it gets. If the town succeeds in finding a narrow legal path to restrict speech at P T Barnum Square, the effect won't be to silence anyone. People will simply move to the next available traditional public forum, the sidewalks around the square and along Greenwood Avenue. That shift leads directly to my next priority, safety. For thirty-one weeks, P T Barnum has proven to be a safe, self-contained location. Moving the rallies under the sidewalk would force participants into closer contact with pedestrian traffic, make it harder for our police to monitor and respond. The square allows visibility and separation. Sidewalks remove that buffer and increase the potential for incidents none of us wants. Third, liability. Right now, the town's exposure is limited because the square's layout naturally separates demonstrators and traffic and commercial entrances and officers to manage a single-defined area. First, the gatherings to sidewalks, the multiplied barriers, curb accidents, strip hazards, and town interactions across multiple properties. That means higher risk of claims and higher legal costs for the town. Fourth, impact on businesses. I understand a couple of businesses on the square dislike having a rally nearby, but relocating participants to sidewalks directly in front of storefronts along the square and by Greenwood will not improve customer experience. That only spreads the activity further and places it closer to entrances and bargains, and that probably helps no one. In short, this proposal doesn't make Bethel any safer or quieter, makes things riskier, costlier, and more divisive. It creates few problems, solves none, and invites taxpayer expense with no clear benefit. I urge the board to protect our rights, our safety, and our town's common sense by rejecting any permit or insurance requirement for peaceful political assembly at P T Barnum Square. Thank you.
So I have a longer version of this that goes through the details of, um, what has unfolded over the last several months. I'm in a unique position to know what's happened. Cindy McGuire from Thirty-four Redwood Drive. So I have it available for my friends here who would like to know. So I should be thanking you for this opportunity to speak, but I'm actually angry and actually sad that it's come to this. Many of us here are overwhelmed by the work of fighting the rise of fascism in our country. My goal has always been, my goal has always been to attract like-minded people and activate them to defend democracy. It was never to get through a fight with our town or our First Amendment rights. We protest government policies, not our neighbors. When we started these rallies more than seven months ago, Dan Carter was very cooperative. He personally went to P T Barnum Square on Good Friday to make sure we had power for our rallies. I thanked him publicly and said he was walking the walk of being a first electman for everyone. And I actually knew that. But we told another town meeting, Newtown, Newtown went through this fight, that we were lucky, worked with your first electman, worked with your chief of police, we were lucky to have Dan Carter and Chief Love. And that's on their record. But the respect and trust now, Dan, have been shattered. What I thought was genuine and support can now be seen only in veneer. I really do feel frustrated and disappointed that it's come to this. In August, I received a letter from Dan asking me to meet and discuss moving our weekly rallies from P T Barnum Square to Town Hall, saying that businesses were being affected and that customers were avoiding the area. He asked for our voluntary cooperation, even noting the grass wasn't looking great. That was our fault, right? After consulting our team, I replied in writing on August twenty-eighth, posing the suggestion. I explained that a few complaints cannot outweigh the risk, outweigh the right to free expression in a traditional public forum and that the square itself is symbolic of civic life. We have always cooperated with the town. We moved our shop, we moved the shopping stroll. We've shortened our events many times. We've adjusted for safety. Dan himself has acknowledged his cooperation. Then on September seventeenth, I received another letter, again dated, uh, well, I'm dated. Dan repeated his request for a meeting, writing that if we were respectful, we'd move. To me, asking peaceful residents to abandon their public square was disrespectful. Meanwhile, Jonathan Phillips filed a FOIA Freedom of Information Act request to review the supposed business complaints. He submitted it on September eighth, the exact same day Dan's letter, second letter, was dated. When the redacted records were finally released, we discovered there were no business complaints at all. The only reference to a business was an email to Dan who subcept, seeking, in the, if the rally had affected them. The owner replied that a few protesters came in afterwards, that business was down overall and it honestly didn't matter. Even more troubling, we found an email from June, two months before I received Dan's first letter, where he wrote that he was reviewing a process for requiring an application and insurance for P T Barnum Square. So the plan to enclose permitting had already begun before any of the discussion of business impact. Then came the most alarming discovery on September ninth, an email from Dan stating, "We have been attempting to handle the group diplomatically with the hopes that Bethel wouldn't become ground zero for a larger, more destructive protest." Recent replies to our efforts have been met with militant resistance. Militant resistance. There had been no conflict. We only reply, we only reply with our, the only reply was our respectful letter and Jonathan's FOIA request. Labeling civic engagement as militant is deeply troubling. A day later, national events brought counter protesters to our square. Despite that tension, we continued to work cooperatively with the police to ensure safety. We even agreed on a plan to divide the square so both groups could share the space safely. But at the last minute, the town overruled that plan and we were never almost over, told why. Even so, that Saturday, both groups co-inceded peacefully. This is just this past Saturday. Conversations happened, respect was shown on both sides. No safety issues, no hostility, just two groups exercising rights together. And yet, the push for permits and insurance continues, framed now as a safety issue. After seven months of peaceful rallies, none of the single safety concerns has been raised until now. So what's really behind this sudden change? Because it's not safety, it's not business, it's control. Our rallies represent something larger than ordinary citizens in Bethel caring about democracy to stand in the heart of town every week. We've done everything right. We've been peaceful, we've been responsible, we've been respectful, honest, and transparent. And that's what makes this so disappointing. I'll get my husband to finish. We should be proud that Bethel has become a free speech pride, not trying to regulate it in a way. P T Barnum Square belongs to us all, all, and the right to assemble there peacefully and proudly belongs to everyone, not just to those the town happens to agree with. Maybe there's still hope if our government remembers that the First Amendment isn't a favor to Grant, but a promise to people.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, I'm all for having a good time, but honestly, guys, come on, like, let everybody have a chance. Try to stick to the time.
I have been at almost every rally since they have begun. I have stood in the rain, I have stood in the heat. I have wandered through the crowd, giving stickers to children and American flags to participants. At one rally, I even spoke. At all of these rallies, I have seen nothing but peaceful gathering. The last, last week, sharing a square with people who have views that are diametrically opposed to my own, it was still a peaceful gathering. I had exchanges with these people, a few of them, cordial, peaceful. We didn't agree and we parted ways. Please don't shut us down. We will not be stopped.
Hi. I really don't want to talk to you guys, I really don't want to. But I just, what I wanted to say is, this week, this week, I've got a real problem.
Okay.
So this week, I hadn't, I was ill and I hadn't been to any of, any of the protest forums in New York. I've been doing it for weeks, weeks, months. And all of a sudden, I see all these people I never saw before. I didn't know they were on a protest. Have to tell you, at first I was here and then we talked. We're a community, and that's what I want people, that's what I wanted to say. It's a waste of our time. Oh, I'm sorry. If we fight with each other, it's a waste of our time. So I think whatever happened, we should be able to work it out. I was going to speak to a lot of people last week. I actually had a fight with a man in the streets. And I said, well, I'm fighting and he's arguing, and I said, I'll be there. He said, you need to. I don't know. He made this big argument and then he said something to me that made me a troublemaker. Oh, I'm a troublemaker, you are. And I questioned him and he said, oh, okay, see ya. Mark, please, please, let's not forget that. That's what makes us special, that we are a community. We all agree. I may not like you, you don't like me, who cares? Let's just go on.
That was you, Bill Gale, right?
Gale.
Yeah, Cynthia Flaters next, and then Denise Meline on this.
Most, yeah. I am new. I've only been here for eighteen months. I'm in there. I'm new to Bethel, I've only been here eighteen months. But I jumped in with the Bethel Blues almost immediately. There was three of us, I think, at the first meeting, and then many more after that. It's been the one good thing that has come to me personally, I'm not talking about anybody else, that has come to me from Donald Trump being elected for a second time. They people are willing to me and what I care for, for my family, my son, my daughter, my husband, and our lives. I'm, I'm the granddaughter, great-granddaughter of high-class survivors, and this is the start of authoritarianism. We will take to the streets. We will fly green vans. I have no job, I sit around all day, because nobody like that. It's a sit-along Greenwood Avenue with my big resisting bitch day sign.
Hi, Denise Meline, I'm one fifty seven, I'm at the drive. So I am the Denise that is being said in the Bethel Blues. The Bethel Blues was just an outcry in my community, based on advice I received from my therapist. She told me, "Deetalk to your community, find your people, find the local people," and that's what I did. And it was father. When I said it was Bethel Blues, it wasn't Democrat, it was because I was blue. I was sad, and I'm still sad, sad to this day. And I want to say that I disagree with a lot of people on my side who have spoken because I don't see there not being any incidents. There have been incidents. I am a sixty-two-year-old grandmother with purple hair, and never have I been told all the names that I've been called these last thirty-one weeks. And I can assure you, they're not coming from the Democrats, okay? The names that we've all declared and the gestures that we've all had to take are incidents. We don't complain about them because it's our right to be there. I suppose it's their right to be obnoxious and loud and make obscene gestures, but that doesn't get us anywhere. So what I started is a, was just an organic role play that is going to go on whether I'm there, Cindy McGuire's there, whoever is not there, people are going to show up to fill our places because this cannot stop. What's happening is not normal. And they say all politics are local, so we're back in Bethel. Some things that are happening in Bethel, I'm in shock to see, to see things happening in my own town. I was amazed to find out at the P and Z hearing that we had these instruments at our disposal to possibly fight some of these building proposals that have been going around that very much seemed to know about. That was shocking. To find out that our free speech was being, trying to be stopped by our first electman, who I've only heard good things about from both sides, that's also shocking. And I just want to say that you will not be able to stop this because as sure as I'm standing here, more and more people will come in.
Eileen Goodrich, Carolyn Baumgartner's next.
Hi, Eileen Goodrich, Sixth Avenue, Lane West. I've been at this for more than fifty years. I'm going to town hall meetings, protesting. Don and I have been in town for over fifty years, and I've been carrying around with me this persnickety little book. It's very well careworn, and it starts off, "Please of people of the United States." I think it's been for many generations because it is so careworn. And after Article Seven, uh, written, uh, by the President George Washington, many of you have heard of him, of him, it has the First Amendment to the Constitution. It's freedom of religion, not from religion, freedom of religion, speech, and the press, rights of assembly and petition. Congress shall make no law respecting and establishing a religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or the press, or the right of the people, peace of mind, to assemble and to petition the government, or address of reasons. Phyllis Hutchinson already read Matt Nick Verbacher's very eloquent letter, and it already addressed many issues that I was going to bring up, and I don't need to go through it again. And I must say, Dan, we are not here for a good time, not at all. I could be at home enjoying a greeting, a wonderful I could be at home doing, reading a wonderful book and not be here with my neighbors. And I am here to let you know that PT Barnum Square is a square for us to vent what we're concerned about and you will not deny us. None of you will be here denying us from doing that. And you are, I am here to tell you that I have been at this for fifty-five years or more. And my mother is so proud. A lady of women voters, and I know that she is very proud of me at this very moment for standing up for my rights and the rights of all of my family. Thank you.
Carolyn Butler? John Tinkins? Okay. So, John Butler's next. Non Goodrich?
He didn't sign out.
Oh, okay. He's on here, okay. Nicole? Nicole Lee? Eric? Okay, next up, Bill Oakes. Bill Oakes?
Bill Oakes, thirty-one, Holyville. Lifelong resident. So, hey, listen, we're all here. And I'm all for the permit process if we have to do that to keep PT Barnum Square safe, a controlled environment. This has been going on way too long, twenty-nine weeks, disruptions in our town for people that own businesses there. Many of those people do not like to speak up because they fear retribution. So, this is a very serious issue. And thank you for bringing it up. And I'm happy people are here. So, I hope you can come to a good decision that keeps the town residency, keeps the public square open, and keeps everybody accountable for their actions. Thank you.
The first one is Jeffrey Denosis. There he is. And the national will be Douglas Quine.
Jeffrey Denosis, Sixteenth Prospect Street. Okay, Jeffrey Denosis, Sixteenth Prospect Street, living here since nineteen eighty-seven. Any restrictions such as requiring permits, charging fees, or even forbidding taxpayers that plan gatherings on town property may actually look like it affects everybody. But I'm here to tell you that it doesn't. Because what happens is restricting the right to gather publicly actually favors the party in power because its suppressed dissent makes it look like fewer people disagree with their actions. People to get permission to gather in front of private business. The next step, we shut down all public land for this. It's actually unfair to the businesses because people talk about losses, business getting canceled or being boycotted. If you put the pressure back on the businesses, it's only going to get worse. And I see spending tax dollars for a police officer that a public gathering is a small price to pay for freedom.
Dr. Douglas Quine, fifty-nine, Taylor Road. A resident taxpayer and voter in Bumpel for thirty-two years with my family. My ancestors were founders of a small town of Rowley, Massachusetts in sixteen thirty-eight. Fought against the oppressive king of the American Revolution and against discrimination and hatred in the Civil War. Both my parents were naval intelligence officers in World War II decoding the German submarine codes. As a college radio newsman, I witnessed the illegal abuses of force during the May Day demonstrations in Washington DC in nineteen seventy and was tear gassed. I was in court as a witness when the illegal arrests of my colleagues were dismissed by an outraged judge. Support of human rights and peaceful protest are central to our way of government. I'm also a biologist and a concerned research scientist. I cannot stand by silently as our world-class health system is being torn apart and the less fortunate lose their. And the less fortunate lose their healthcare safety net. I'm proud to be a resident of Bumpel where people peacefully assemble to seek redress of wrongs and hold their national government accountable through our Constitution and the rule of law. Our town is a shining beacon across the state. And it should remain so without requiring permits or insurance.
Excuse me if I do any overlapping, but I promise you that my written, what I am writing will go much faster than if I improvise. Whether in ancient times or today, public squares around the world, Times Square, Tiananmen Square, Trafalgar Square, have always served the same essential purpose as gathering places for people. In our little town, PT Barnum Square is just that, a shared space where community and conversation come together. It's named after a man whose success was distinctly American. Only in a country with strong First Amendment protections could someone as flamboyant, controversial, and unfiltered as Sidney's Taylor Barnum thrive so publicly. For more than thirty weeks now, my neighbors have gathered peacefully in PT Barnum Square exercising their constitutional rights for free speech and assembly. This is who we are. This is our legacy as Americans, as defenders of democracy, and as a community committed to civil dialogue. Few things are more American than the tradition of peaceful protest. When people from all sides of an issue share space and speak their minds respectfully, it's not a problem. It's a hallmark of freedom. There is no issue. That's why the proposed permitting process is so troubling. It appears designed not to protect our rights, but to limit them. Bureaucratic red tape and delays will have a chilling effect on public expression, denying citizens the ability to gather and speak when it matters most. Requiring permits for worse insurance coverage places an unnecessary and unfair burden on those simply seeking to use a space that already belongs to them. As someone who pays taxes and deeply values our town services, I believe we already contribute to the protections that public spaces require. Remember, PT Barnum Square belongs to all of us, is quite literally the public square our founders envisioned, a place for the open, unfettered exchange of ideas. And here's a radical thought. This square can be shared. Imagine setting an example for our children and maybe for other towns by welcoming different views and encouraging civil conversation. A permit, just because two groups happen to be present at the same time, isn't just unnecessary. It's insulting. It undermines the very spirit of who we are. We have a choice to come together or to create barriers. We are better in Bumpel. Let's act like it.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, what we're going to do is we're going to call a short recess. And then we're going to come back and continue with the residents. Next on our list, okay, so what we're going to try to do is we're going to try to get to the heartbeat of ourselves. So, please move forward as brief as you can. We do have folks here from schools and some other business projects tonight. So with that, I'm going to say we're going to bring up, I think it's Wendy Gann, your next. Hi. Next up is going to be Maureen Tyrell. That next up will be Maureen.
Hey, everybody, my name is Plany Dan here and I live in seventy-four Sunset Hill Road. I want to thank your D O T for paving our road. So, I just moved here five months ago. It's a smooth area. I absolutely adore this town. I love diversity, I love the culture, the arts, the restaurants, and people. I've attended the protests in the square a couple of times. I have some really lovely people. And there's no question that we are passionate about what's happening in our country, both on the right, on the right and the left. And, you know, some people have shared the sentiment that they're sad about this. And I am too, because we are Americans, you know, and we are all citizens here. And our founding principles are about civil society, about freedom of press, freedom to petition our government. And I think we really lose something when we stay divided from each other. And, you know, I attended a video call with a group called Story Courts where they take someone like me, you know, being a Democrat liberal, you know, middle-class woman from New York originally. And they coupled me with a guy that was in his thirties, who was a staunch Republican somewhere in the Midwest. And we just met on video and we talked about our upbringing and how we, why we believe what we believe, why we value one ideology over another. And it was so powerful just to have this conversation with this guy because we would all agree that we want good lives. We want to have a job that pays a livable wage. We want healthcare. We want to vacation. We want to have a safe community for our kids. You know, and that doesn't matter if it's right or left. And yes, there's huge things happening in our country right now, but every person has the right to voice what they believe, you know? I had many conversations about Mr. Trump, President Trump, with people who were, you know, very avid supporters of him. And I said, look, this is a democracy. It is for and by the people. And you have the right to vote for who you want to despite what I feel about that person. I get to go in the voting booth and vote for my candidate. You go in the voting booth to vote for yours. But the level of instability and the discourse that we're having in the division, you know, Bumpel is a microcosm of the entire country. And I heard a lot tonight, you know, on both sides. And, you know, I've been in the public square in those protests, not recently. Saturday drove through. Police there, I saw a Trump flag sitting on the bench. And I said, whoa, it's getting real now, you know? And, but they have the right to be there just like we do, of course. In terms of the petition, you know, I just heard about it the other day. And having been there, you know, sometimes it can feel a little unsafe because you are stepping up, walk the curb sometimes, you know, getting people to honk, who thumbs up. Other Trumps, people come by and cook the bird, you know, and everybody has that right. But, you know, I've been to protests in New York City, Washington DC, where it's tens of thousands of people. And of course, a permit is required. You know, it's just logistically a nightmare. There's, you know, buses and bathrooms and all sorts of safety issues. And, you know, maybe you could just consider it, if the protests get to a certain number of people, that you move the location to this fabulous lawn that's out in front of the town hall. You know, and let everybody just come and share their views and, you know, we all have so much more in common that we have these differences, you know? And our social media has really impacted this divide. You know, we stay in our silos, middle listeners that we need to believe in. And we're not going to solve this problem in this country, or in Bumpel, unless we start having true, honest conversations with each other and recognize at the end of the day, we are all American citizens. So, I'm ready.
Maureen, and then Penny Kessler's next.
Hi, Maureen, thirty-nine, Wolfits Road. I'm here to speak on the back of the idea of requiring a liability insurance. Now, several years ago, my granddaughter fell in the municipal center lawn. And one of the first selectmen, or one of the selectmen came over and said, if you need help, we have insurance for that very purpose. We'll take care of it. We have liability insurance. I looked at the line item, I think it's five hundred and seventy-one thousand. We pay every year for instance is that if a situation happens, insurance is there to cover it. We already have it. We shouldn't have to apply for it because a group that's once again, not a sanctioned group, it's a Facebook or a social media group decides to come together and alert people. So to say they should have to pay for insurance that they already do through their taxpayer dollars on the line item, if you can look at it, is ridiculous. Now, I also understand what you said earlier, and I think I want to just restate it. If I just go and so does seventy-five or a hundred and fifty other people to exercise my right to free speech, if I'm not part of an organization, I don't owe anything. I don't need a permit. I don't need liability insurance because it's me as an individual and perhaps another hundred people out there. Is that correct? As an individual?
We're not going back and forth, but you know, you heard what he said.
Okay, so I just want to reiterate, yes, that is what he said. That individuals can go out and exercise their free speech without a permit or liability insurance. It's only organizations. So, I encourage my fellow individuals to just keep coming out.
Hi, Penny Kessler, twenty-two, Springfield Lane. You guys are awesome. Thank you for allowing us to have this conversation. So, I know that they're outside, so I want to make sure that they're here. I want to start by thanking Chief Pusner and the men and women of our police department and the police commission. For years, not just for several months, there has been police presence at the crosswalk at PT Barnum, making sure that those of us who dare cross Greenwood Avenue can do so safely. They make sure that cars turning left onto Greenwood stand a chance. They have been at rallies on Saturdays in both lovely and miserable weather, doing the same for all of us who want to spend our time in our beautiful downtown. They are consummate professionals and they deserve our gratitude. Surprised, I am opposed to requiring a permit and insurance. The requirements are antithetical, not only to the First Amendment right to the free exercise of speech or the right of people peacefully to assemble. Requiring a permit four weeks in advance puts a damper on that right. Requiring insurance adds a conventional burden which limits the right to peacefully assemble. Is the Board of Selectmen really going to limit the free exercise of speech or the right of the people peacefully to assemble? Is the Board of Selectmen going to tell downtown restaurants that they need a permit and insurance to place tables and chairs at PT Barnum, on PT Barnum for their customers? I don't think so. So, let me add this for everybody in the room. I applaud anyone who publicly takes a stand for their political convictions. I may disagree with your opinions, but I will defend your right to say them peacefully. There really was, what some might call a counter rally downtown across from Sycamore. I say, good for them. I believe that peaceful protest is not only patriotic, but it's a right and an obligation. This past Saturday, my husband and I walked to our car and made our way along the sidewalk at PT Barnum Square. We said hello to, and were greeted by men and women who clearly disagreed with each other, and probably us. Somehow, they managed, we managed to coexist side by side respectfully. That is because we are Bumpel and we know how to treat each other. The proposed requirements are simply not what Bumpel is all about. Bumpelites may not agree on all things, may not agree on anything. But I believe we agree on this. There is no room in this town for the government to limit peaceful free speech. Thank you.
That's a good call. Matt Dalewood. Please keep it going. We're going to stop at eight thirty. Matt Dalewood will be next.
Catherine Stone, 15 Grand Street. Catherine Stone, 15 Grand Street. My husband and I have been residents since 1984. We have been involved in all kinds of things throughout our years here. I was taken aback by the published notice that was put out at 10:30 last Tuesday morning, that the Board of Selectmen was having a special session to discuss this very issue, with five hours' notification for the residents of Bethel. I'm happy to attend that. And I wish to thank you, Rick Strain, for suggesting that you, as a board, table this and bring it to public comment. Had that not occurred, this never would have happened, in my belief. We would have taken whatever decision three of you made and been told, "This is what we'll do." This is Bethel. We used to be, the town government, we'd count the town meetings when my husband and I first moved here. And we'd put up yay or nay for the budget. It hasn't evolved over the decades, which is a process within our government. But I have to say that to require an application to be able to gather, as well as insurance, goes against every constitutional right that our Constitution was formed and we have to abide by for hundreds of years that we've been in, I was just aware. I also take issue with the fact that there are tables and chairs on a public square only by a private business owner. I don't see that happening anywhere else. And I question, is there an application made by that person? And I don't even understand why. Because why are you paying taxes for that to be for all of us, not one individual? I don't see other restaurants in town putting there tables and chairs on public property. That's all I have.
Then let me turn on the music.
Steve, my time. I agree with that. I think our policy requires other people.
Okay. Let me, Kennedy Shaver will be next.
Hi, Matt Dowen, 16th and Patty's Lane West. For the record, I agree with what many people have already said. I would like to comment that I'd always been proud to say that even though my town was run by the opposing party, they would put the good of the town and the rest of the party. Stuff like this, so I can't say that. And that makes me very excited.
And then Rock Hill.
Hi, I'm Kennedy Shaver and I live on Chelsea Road. Let me just get through this, because I lose my place. Let's start again. Sorry, guys. Let's take a five. Hello. I don't know how many of you know that I got my start with these rallies. I'm the chanter, so if you haven't heard the words, "Show me what the prophecy looks like," that's me. Also to you. Yeah, I know. All right, I heard. So I got involved with the rallies by just showing up. Literally just showing up. I heard about the Women's Day rally for International Women's Day on March 80, overheard at a local restaurant. I was curious, so I showed up. I knew a few chants from normal protests. I was welcomed with such warmth on my cold March day. This opportunity to use my voice in a downtown community is not something I took lightly, because I do come from a very small town, a little quarter. I've been a resident since '22. And in that time, Bethel has come to me to watch me, the same thing to everybody here, the community over issues. And I try to spread kindness like confetti. I dance around and I play upbeat music. I mean negativity, that this land is your land, this land is my land, because I believe it. And we know that our small town and our close-knit community is important. I personally introduced myself to most everybody around that square. Most of all the businesses have either met me, and if you didn't meet me like this, you haven't fallen here. But the reactions have been almost entirely supportive. We will always promote the small businesses near us when we have a rally. We have worked incredibly hard with multiple businesses, street parking solutions, when that was a problem. We've worked with those small businesses, informing them of the location change, and patronizing them ourselves. We spent a lot of money downtown on Saturday. Because I recognize the importance of supporting our community, I have formed positive relationships with a lot of our local police officers. This is something I am incredibly grateful for. Having discussions about traffic, pedestrianism, and everything in between, because that's what community does. There's an ongoing effort in town right now to date this downtown rally. Really, it feels like a bit of silence to us. It really does like silence to us. I also want to say that I did also attend a special session last week. And Selectmen Carter, you did say that someone could get hit by a car. I don't see that as a pedestrian problem, because pedestrians who follow the rules, I don't see that as an issue. What I see as an issue is lack of sidewalks, lack of pedestrian safety, lack of support we needed for those people downtown. My dog was almost murdered by a car because they ran the stop sign and stuff there. Literally, everybody is losing their minds, it seems, in their driving styles. That should be something our police pursue. That creates a safer street environment. Bethel has a historic past with lots of public transport, and that was very distinctive. We don't have that anymore. But our taste for cars over the well-being of human beings. Because living, breathing, human beings matter. I have asthma. I know multiple people who have asthma. And there have been cars dumping emissions right at us, literally. It happened a lot. Are you trying to commit attempted murder? Seriously? Now, more important than our jobs here, more pertinent, anyone's job here, is those human beings. The open fires, the car dumping emissions around rallies, and lots of people constantly starting these barbecues. Do we not have a fire department that provides a size? Why not? So why do we permit all of this genuinely toxic behavior from drivers in your town? Why have we not repeated crosswalks? Why is each crosswalk timed only 20 seconds? That limits movement significantly. Why are you promoting open planes during one of the dry seasons we have, as you were outside the Republican headquarters two weeks ago? So allow me to paraphrase another Kennedy. Ask not what your community can do for you, but what can you do for your community?
Rock Hill, next. And then I think this is going to be, we'll do one more. Kennedy James. And that was wrapping it up.
Rock Hill, 15 Grand Street. It appears to me that the insurance question and liability question too. And protests are not designed to be convenient.
Morning. Good afternoon.
Evening. Hi, I'm Kennedy James, Bethel resident, born and raised, live in the house. I was born. I just hear, and it's got to be said, that there's a partisan agenda going on. I feel that there's a partisan agenda happening here. And it's affecting, trying to affect the constitutional right. I think it's like a trickle-down from our White House right now, where they're trying to change the Constitution. Yes. What you guys are seeming to address is, this isn't just that square. This is right here. This is in your office, in your office, in your office, in the planning and zoning offices. Anytime the public meets and there can be dissension, that is a meeting. That is a meeting protected by our right to assemble it. And if you do it out there and don't do it in here, you've got a problem, because the same rules apply. And if you do it in here, then tell me, how many people does Bethel have to hire to work on the petitions? How many thousands of petitions? The computers that are necessary, everything that is necessary to keep track and to save these things, it's ludicrous. I think the best words that were said here tonight were, "This is a solution looking for a problem." And I say it's a problem that is actionable. It's actionable by law. And I would not touch it with a tentacle pole if I were you guys.
So we are done with public comment? This is done.
I live here. I'm safe.
You know what? We have given a tough time.
Am I safe here, Dan? Am I safe here as a person of color, as an immigrant, as a woman? I'm safe. I'm running for office. I need to know if I'm safe in this building, speaking to you and any office, speaking to any of you right there. Am I safe?
I don't know what you're afraid of, but we've given an answer.
The rhetoric that Trump is...
I don't know what you're talking about.
That's what they said. They said, "Down with Murphy." That's what they were protesting and amplified their message. That personally puts me in danger.
You know what?
Because that, right? And if it's nothing, if it's nothing to danger me,
Would you please stop it?
Then you would not put any sort of test or fee or barrier to free to assemble or present.
You know what? Everybody's being all stressful. You can't take over a meeting like that. You're getting a handful of time. We're going to work it together.
I tried to find out and you told me, "No, it's not."
We gave it over an hour and a half for public comment.
And that's what public comment is.
That's it.
We have a business.
Okay, that's it. That's it. That's it.
We haven't heard you talk about this.
You know what? We got a lot of people signed up here and knocking off. It's not fair to everybody here. We need to move on with our business in town. We've not even acted on it.
Should have had a council session like you said.
That doesn't work that way, because we have the opportunity to move on with our agenda tonight. It's not fair to you guys.
You're not fair to everybody.
Guys.
You're not fair to the election, to our democracy.
Okay, hold on. Let me finish. Knock it off. Let's work together here, okay? We may not have been able to present anything tonight, because we've heard everybody tonight.
You're all right.
That's it. I asked you to be honest with you. I know we just heard about you tonight and it was all good stuff. About your conversation with somebody here?
Oh, you remember me?
So, of course I remember this. Ladies and gentlemen, give me a moment for one second. Knock it off for one second, okay? Ladies and gentlemen, Bethel is a wonderful community. We've heard that expressed here tonight. This started last week in a special meeting to start having a discussion. Everything we do on this board has to be discussed in public. That's how this started. We may have had a public hearing. We may have opened for public comment. It was the first time we said, "Hey, we have to start talking about this." So we added it to the agenda. It wasn't something where we're trying to hide everything from everybody. Everything we put out is public. We're here for public comment for the same reason. Let me finish. Guys, we all work together here. We were probably not even going to act on this tonight. We've had a great opportunity to hear a lot of things. And everybody's going on, talking about what they think the program is going to be, or what they think the permit is going to be, or what they think insurance is going to be. We haven't come to that agreement yet. That's why this is a discussion. And we've sat here very patiently, listening to everybody, because we're Bethel. And what happened though, that Green has been remarkable last week. Everybody was called. They were all working together. It was fantastic. The question that we've had isn't about whose side is water free speech. The question is, is it too small? Should we be here at the town hall green? I just don't know. This is the question we're wrestling with. So it's about safety. It's not about anything else. So you can think what you want, but we're going to have an open dialogue as a group, as a board, and we're going to talk about this. And we've been grateful that you added to it. We really have. But there comes a point where we have to get on with our business. We may not even handle this tonight. So that's what I'm trying to say, because, listen, we don't, we don't want... You know what?
If it's going to be done another time, would that be a guarantee for everyone here tonight?
What, to have?
To have an exception.
People who have signed up here tonight, want to speak. People who've signed up here, who can speak at the next meeting, we'll talk about that. We'll save this list for public comment. The next time we address this, because we won't finish with the decision tonight, because we honestly listened to whatever we had.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, but again, we have a lot of work to do. And we're not trying to push this through on anybody's back.
We all have lives.
No, I understand.
You're paid right now. We're not on your time.
Fair enough. Next up, correspondence. So we have another... Actually...
I realize there are questions that you have said. And I want you to know that I actually don't want to say. And I want folks to know, I have served in the military for 10 years. And I have received messages about how I am going to be gang-friended and my family, and how my family should be supported.
But I'm sorry. I don't know. I don't know what's going on with my side, but if you want to talk about this afterwards, I'm trying to maintain the form of the meeting so we can all move on with what we need to do for business.
All I can tell you is that today, your rights might not be at stake, but this is helping start.
What's funny? What's funny, Dan?
It's not, you know what, what bothers me, I think, is we're working hard to have a forum where we can actually talk about this issue. And I think we've been working really hard to make sure everybody does have a chance. We've been here for an hour and 20 minutes.
I understand that.
So I'm open to everybody else who has a spot.
This is, these are different times. These are different times, and people need to be heard.
I understand.
How not put this on?
Would you like to have a public hearing on this?
I think that would be great. I wrote you a letter tonight and I said, "What about a community forum?"
So let's do this. I will promise everybody in this room, before we move on with this, we will, it's kind of like, yeah. We can do a public hearing and do the same thing again. It's all about being heard, and that's okay, but we do have to move on with our business.
So when can we expect a meeting date and time?
I don't know. We have to discuss, I think, what happened.
You know, you know it's a state.
What it helps if we... We're trying to give an opportunity to vote on a public hearing, but you're yelling at us. We're doing everything we can, right?
So I don't think you said it. Said it. You got ahead.
Yeah, we have to. Okay, so let's keep moving with our agenda. Okay, so correspondence, we've got a number of things that have come in regarding sniper, have been read and all in record. And we have emails that have come in after hours. So we'll use those if we have a fight here. So let's run through just our minutes. So, first off, I accept a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes September 23, 2025.
Excuse me.
Can you finish?
Not crying with that.
Well, I was asking. Okay, so. I take a, accept a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes September 23, 2025. We're approving that. Sorry, like that. Here's our whole business. It's the consideration of an application process and required insurance for being part of our. So what I'd like to do is... So what I'd like to do is, um, with this, I'd like to vote the motion that we set a public hearing on the subject. Date to be determined by... I will publish it. So, okay. No, no. We'll do it in the evening. Yeah, we got to do it in, uh, certainly like the end of the month, the second week of November. How many? Do you want to just keep going?
I just see a show here. How many people wanted to say something? How many? Raise your hand if you or someone wanted to say something. I understand this. Raise your hand so we can get a number.
I have not spoken.
I have not spoken.
Well, no, if you have spoken tonight and you are not, and you are still on one of those lists, that's what you're talking about.
Right, if you've already spoken. Who hasn't spoken who wants to speak? Just give us a show here. Why don't we just form a line here? Let's do it. Say what the line, guys. Whoever wants to die, I think we're in a fight. We're going to table. Yeah, we're going to table. This is for the Gray, right?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody keep it down. We're going to just continue. We're going to table for the ride. If you wouldn't mind just state your name.
Garvey, did he restate his way? Is this in this extra line in the public hearing? Because there are people who have a vote tonight. And I changed, there are a lot more people who would be able to be heard.
Can everybody hear me?
No.
I'm sorry. You guys hear me now? One. I want to make it clear. No, I spent 27 years of my life, you know, enforcing the laws and the constitution. And I don't want to do anything to try to express yourselves, to protest peacefully. I think, you know, that's what makes America great is that as a society, we have the right to disagree with one another peacefully. My only concern is, and it's not really about insurance. It's really not even about permits. My main concern is, is at what point this group become too big on P T Barnum and we agreed to move it to a different location. And I think that's the dialogue that I'm showing. That, well, no, this is what I'm trying, just trying to have. Well, they actually changed because it wasn't right. Somebody got your time. Look, I'm trying to come up with a reasonable solution. That's what I'm going to tell you. I don't want to stop you right, but you're not listening to me. You're shaking your head, disagreeing with what I'm saying. What you said? I am listening to you. If you just heard what I said, I am listening to you. I just said I don't want to interfere with your right to free speech. Then don't. I don't. Well, then don't. Explain why. We don't need to know your... Under your oath. All right, I'm done talking. We'll discuss. You can't respect me like I respect you. Listen, everything you've said, you don't want to get me in the right to talk without being a punk. Okay, so let's just go through the line.
So I did email a letter to today. Read it. My notes are a little mishmashy. So just a couple of things. In the beginning of the meeting, you all mentioned free speech and the First Amendment rights. Your actions are antithetical to that. Requiring insurance and a permit is obstructionist to people meeting in downtown square. And I believe it's because it's really the message. We haven't had the numbers yet except on Kids Day, which were, I think, 1,500 people, which we moved to the municipal center, which is great. But we haven't had those kind of numbers. So you're anticipating a problem where there isn't a problem. People from different points of view showed up the last couple of weeks. There were great discussions. I've also been called names, shouted out from cars because I was carrying my American flag during my march. And been, you know, given a finger. So, um... I think we've shown that we can handle anything like those sorts of things. There's been no confrontations. There's always going to be those outliers. We don't know who they are. They're, you know, they may show up, they may not. We don't know. But that shouldn't be anticipated as a problem. And requiring insurance and a permit is petty. We have the plan to speak and pay to speak in a public town square that we pay taxes and is already insured. It's obstructionist. My only other voice is my vote on November 4th. I could vote for you most time. I voted for you because I am a convert Democrat. I was a Republican for most of my voting years. I consider myself very in line and I don't consider myself a party line voter. I never have been. I voted for you. I voted for you. I won't be doing that on November 4th if this continues because I think it's a projection that, you know, trickle-down politics is a real thing. And I, we are a country in crisis. Crisis equals opportunity, though. You have to see a solution, not see a problem that isn't there at this point. See a solution. It's a form of leadership. Creative solutions are a form of leadership. We are, we're negotiating different comments. So I'm asking that you not impose permits or insurance. Allow the protests to continue peacefully as they have been doing. There hasn't been a single issue. So respectfully, thank you.
Good evening, Tony Heslin. I reside in Danbury, but I have business this year in Bethel. I want to briefly address this from two perspectives. The first, as a business owner, I've crossed a lot of things off because they've been set already. When I came here 10 years ago looking to open a business, the vibrant downtown Bethel is really what attracted me most. You see people walking through the streets, gathering in the downtown area. And I've quickly learned it's the lifeblood of the businesses here. You need people in this downtown. And in my opinion, any activity that brings people downtown is good for Bethel. It only makes sense that if people are here, a percentage of them are also going to buy goods or services, whether it's a cup of coffee, a tank of gas, an item from one of the shops, a meal from a restaurant, money's got to be spent. It's the same argument I used a few years ago when somebody tried to get me to complain about food truck riding. I don't get upset that people are buying food here on the Green and not from my restaurants. I get excited that people are coming to this town, seeing what a great town it is. If they don't purchase for me that night, maybe they'll come back and try me another time. And it's the same in these, it's the same in these rallies. They're mostly Bethel people, but people are here from other towns. And they see what a great town it is. I found musicians here that are playing in my restaurant now. They go out and they spend money. And if any business is telling you that this is hurting them, they've got bigger problems. Because 10% of the week, 3% of the week, a rally in downtown is not hurting their businesses. It can't be true. I would love 50 to 100 people to get dropped in front of one of my restaurants at lunchtime every Saturday. So you can sell things on services to them that you've got. A person or group not agreeing with the message is not justification for silencing the message. Restricting the access to the square will negatively impact the vibrancy of this town. And if it starts here to prevent something illegal, where does it end? What about the musicians who gather and play instruments? The bike groups and running clubs who take these public spaces? The tables that people have mentioned in the Green? I have no problem with that. But if you're, you know, if you're going to stop this, you have to stop that. The children's groups, the sports organizations doing fundraisers. Where does it end? It's an incredibly slippery slope. You restrict some, you're going to be forced to restrict more. In the 30-plus weeks of this rally, there's been no problems, no safety issues, no parking problems, no business interruption. Even the last two weeks, where opposing organizations share the square, no issues, peaceful coexistence. And perhaps maybe an understanding of the common ground where people aren't fighting online, but they're actually talking in person. So why are we trying to fix a problem that isn't a problem? It's citizens gathering in their town to have their voices heard and there's nothing more American than that. Now, I want to address it as a veteran, an American, and as a student of history. Free and public expression of opinions without censorship, interference, or restraint by the government is a core part of the First Amendment. History shows us that when governments allow peaceful assembly, societies tend to evolve and reform. When they forbid it, pressures build and it explodes to violence. It's true throughout world history. It's true throughout American history dating back to the Boston Massacre. So many protests started as peaceful assembly. It only turned violent when restrictions were implemented by government. Repleasing speech does not eliminate the dissent, it just concentrates pressure. This group has been to the Green for 31 weeks without incident. They're peacefully advocating for issues that are inherently important to most reasonable people. Freedom, equality, access to health care, fair wages, world peace. We may not all agree on the path to achieving these goals, but they are shared goals, no matter what side you're on. So I strongly recommend this permit process not be moved forward. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, all. I'm here in strong support for a local group that has exercised its First Amendment rights by opening peaceful weekly rallies every Saturday morning for the past six months. These gatherings have drawn participants not just from Bethel, but from surrounding communities. People who care deeply about preserving democracy, ensuring access to health care, defending voting rights, protecting the environment, and most importantly, the safeguarding of free speech. Let me be clear. These rallies have been peaceful, consistent, and in the spirit of civic engagement. They have not required permits before. And there is no justification that warrants a change now. The suggestion to reduce their frequency once a month or less is to make them less visible. It's not a matter of logistics. It's a matter of suppressing voices that some may secretly find inconvenient or too invasive. Free speech is not meant to be comfortable. It is meant to be protected. These rallies are advancing knowledge and civil discourse in a time when democracy needs defending. We should be celebrating, not curbing. Thomas Jefferson reminded us, "The most sacred of the duties of government is to do equal and impartial justice to all citizens." Justice demands that we do not single out one group for unnecessary regulation simply because they are visible, vocal, and persistent. And George Washington warned, "If the freedom of speech is taken away, then the dumb and silent may be led, like sheep, to the slaughter." This group has followed the law, remained peaceful, and energized our civic life. They are exercising the very rights founders in China, not for themselves, but for the public good. Instead of discouraging activism, we should be asking, "What kind of town does Bethel want to be? One that embraces public engagement or one that quietly pushes it into the shadows?" The permit process should not be used. It should not become a weapon to regulate viewpoints or chill free expression. Weekly peaceful rallies are well within the scope of protected constitutional activity. Let's support the Constitution and the Constitution.
We met Saturday for the first time, although I voted for you. Thank you for your time. I mean, John, with an interest in you, I still voted for you. I appreciate you doing, I appreciate the extra half hour. A lot of people have something to say. And then you said the first time accidentally, I was going to Jekyll's and I crossed the street and asked you what was going on in the corner and you explained it to me. Now, I don't agree with Charles Kirk, but on the way out, I shook hands with a gentleman and his wife that I had a very nice conversation with, although I don't agree with them at all. And that was fantastic, I thought. Now, I have a stroke two years ago, so I have a hard time just now getting out. But everybody was getting along. When I asked, I think that was the lady that was speaking to you. I asked, you guys were talking about a little problem. She was mentioning a problem in the corner. What's going on? And she said, "These people have development." She was very upset by it. I was oblivious to it and you were very nice to explain it to me and I appreciate that. And I just wanted, it was hard for me to get here tonight. I found every reason I could not to come here because I hated this town. And I think it's important for us to be able to, to be able to... If not at that part because of the reasons you mentioned, the size, then make it uniform for everyone. But there should be places for all of us to meet and speak. I love this town. Founded by an accident, I was on my way from West Pointe Relo station my last four years in Germany to the end of Fort EBS. I ended up on Old Bed Hill Street. My house is up for auction. And I did on it three years before I retired. I've been working on it ever since. So I love this town and people. They're great. My next door neighbor, Jerry Hoffman, planning to be in the dead days. And he was a stark, extreme right wing. He was Republican, I don't know now. But this time, it was a hard time to let people get here. And it's hard to let people see this one. Your brother-in-law. Oh, I'm sorry. Your brother-in-law comfortable with that. But the gentleman waiting for him said everything I had to say. But I think it's important. And like I said, it's good to have two sides and we all, you know, shaking hands with those two people on the way out. I didn't know who Charles Kirk was until this unfortunate death, which I think is horrible. Idiot. I didn't know who Charles Kirk was until this unfortunate death, which I think is horrible, an idiot. Anybody. The police department in this town, they do a great job. I got across the street with no problem. And I found a parking space, by the way, so. And it was at the time of the rally from Jacklins, so it's not that hard of a thing. I know three of the owners, one of them is my neighbor, the rest of us, they've not said a single negative thing about the rallies. Nothing. I haven't heard a single thing in conversation that's up their business. In fact, it probably brings people into town, and it's a great town, you know? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Gina Romano. I'm from Cherry, Connecticut, but I totally love Bethel. It's much more interesting. I spend a lot of time here, and I spend a lot of money here, but I come here as often as I can. I'm also a teacher, and today I was teaching social studies and teaching about the Constitution. Please tell me what I am supposed to tell my students right now. Do we have a First Amendment? Do we have a Constitution? Public protest is a First Amendment right. You either support the United States Constitution, or you do not. Just say it. Silence is not an answer. Yes or no? You support Constitution, raise your hand. Then you support the First Amendment, and you support the right of the Bethel protesters to protest on our public property. Depending on how you vote, we will know where you stand. As long as the US government is deploying our US military against its own citizens, among other horrors people will tell them. Or non-partisans and traitors in favor of the destruction of American liberty and the Constitution. So let's see how you vote.
Hello, good evening. I'm Gabriela Hernandez, 114 Golden Drive. My question is very simple. Am I safe here? Am I safe in the town where I bought my house and pay my taxes and do my best to engage and exercise in my civic duty of voting, participating in town meetings, making public comments, running for office? I need to know that I'm safe here. I'm an intelligent enough person to be able to deduce and infer that what's happening around state, around the country, is directly impacting me and my safety, my sense of what I hold dear, and this community, I thought, was a safe place. Now, people believe and think what they are allowed and what they want to, right? People believe in white supremacy. People practice bigotry, misogyny, sexism, all sorts of discrimination, all the time. We see it. I've experienced it. Microaggressions happen all the time. I need to know that I'm safe, because the rhetoric that comes along with people that believe and vote for Republicans. That's what they believe, right? They want me gone. They want me dead. They want me hurt. They want me to not exist. But I do exist. I am a person. I am a kind, loving, respectful person that fights for one's rights. I went into education because to me, education is justice. Regardless of what it is, there's always an educational piece, an access, right? Access and exercise of those rights is imperative to our town. So I want to know if I'm safe here. Will all of you currently holding office condemn that sort of rhetoric? Right? Am I to feel safe here? Because there is a clear line that has been marked by all of you serving on all the boards and commissions right now, right, for a selectmen. I need to know, do you in fact believe and uphold the I am Charlie Kirk, the downwards of Murphy? All of these things, right? We can stand here, people have been saying, "Oh, it's a nice place," you know? You know, you can have these conversations, but ultimately, my safety is at risk. I am not white. I am not a man, right? I'm not a police officer. I've never served in the military. I'm a regular person. I need to know that I'm safe here, because all of you will uphold our First Amendment right. And will take that additional step to condemn the violent, fascist rhetoric that has been spewing all over our country by your party. We had this conversation at the Sustainability Mission about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Whether it's part of sustainability, equity is absolutely the integral part of sustainability. Without it, it's more the same, right? Poor people getting, like, their homes bulldozed, having dumps near them, having more exhaust and cars and all that other pollution that comes with how things are sown and how things are designed in town. Our population is growing. Our demographics are changing. I'm a clear example of it, right? So how are we going to move forward? I did not hear you guys support or go against it. I've seen your letter to the state asking for money, and you use the diversity and inclusion of this town, right? To basically paint a picture of how great this town is, and the state funding should continue and all of that, and it should. But how are we going to uphold it? How are all of you are going to uphold that? If you're trying to go on tax, you'll see an obstruction to easily assemble and our freedom of speech. So I would like to know if I'm safe here this time. I will take first silence as a promise. Thank you.
I think that this is a difficult night for Bethel, because it actually checks live on the reality that our country is facing. The fact that there has to be a conversation and a forum as to whether or not the leaders and the elected officials have to consider the need for them to be up early or peacefully assembled. And I want to be clear, assembleable and protest doesn't have to be peaceful. The rights that people have, the rights that I have, have been, we have them because people have fought for them. People have died for those rights. What's happening in the country, it's not normal. People assembling, protesting for 32 weeks straight, it's not normal. People are now coming every Saturday, because they like to be out there. They like getting put down. They like being called names. People don't want that. Families are being kidnapped. Women are being told that they don't have the right to choose what they want to do with their family. Living a major, and he was kidnapped by seven men, massed. That is what's happening. When people are assembling in public places to say, "This is not right," it's because it's not right. It's not normal. And they're done. But somehow, you have residents in this town who are saying, "This is not right," and who are showing how their love for humanity, their commitment to justice, and for you to consider to put a permit, to put an obstacle for free speech, it's sad. And the one thing that people have power, our voices are powerful. But I hear somebody else say that they have the power to vote. And the same way that people can elect you, they also have the power to elect you. For you and helping other public servants in this town, in this state, and in this country. As I said, I have been called names. I get random text messages from Google Numbers saying that I am next, and that my family is next. People don't know that I have served in the military, and I have served, that I have been in for 10 years. People don't know that I took a oath to defend this country and everyone in it, regardless of what they think of me or how they see me. That is what's happening. I am afraid to leave my house. My heart is broken. Families are being disappeared. Children were put on handcuffs on October 4th in Chicago. And this, tonight, this is how that stands. When you have people's powers, don't have. Thinking, believing that they have the power to limit the freedom of speech. I hope that you get in touch with your humanity, with your conscience. And I hope that the decisions that you made are decisions that you're going to feel good about telling your grandchildren, telling your children in the future what you did when a group of people showed up to cause trouble. Because let me be clear, everyone says, "Oh, we all have the right to have an opinion." There is a difference between an opinion and there is a difference between taste. And the reality that a group of people is divided, it's all getting beaten out for violence. There is a difference when a group of people is calling dead to Muslims. There is a difference when a group of people is saying that all immigrants are a space and all of them should be deported and all of them should be killed. That is, that's the difference. I've been to these rallies, and trust me, I don't like rallies. I don't. Because I believe in organizing, and I believe that instead of rallying every Saturday, we should be organizing to make sure that elected officials are so scared of the power that the people have, that they would never in their mind consider putting permits or putting obstacles for people to assemble and to organize. Again, I really, really hope you look inwards and think about the future. Think about the future for your grandchildren, think about the future for you. Because this is what's happening in Chicago, what's happening in DC, what's happening in LA. Tonight, this is how it starts.
It's going to be hard to follow that. Can I let me go first? Good night, everyone. My name is Larissa Phillips. I live at Nine Con Road. It is, I hate to follow that because it was so powerful, but I do want to be heard too. So I'm speaking tonight in support of the continued use of PT Barnum Square for free speech and political protest without the need for town permits or insurance. The square serves an important area for the expression of freedom of speech and assembly for Bethel citizens. Forcing us to file a municipal center facility application, including liability insurance, is a burdensome and unnecessary barrier to exercising our First Amendment rights. Even if creating an undue barrier to free speech and assembly is not the town's intention, it will be the result, and therefore, the requirement is unaccessible.
So obviously, we, I just want to say a couple of things. I know it's contentious. I know that there's actually a lot of confusion about what we do and not what I do here. When we started this conversation purely about what do we do to keep everybody safe on PT Barnum Square? Not because anybody disagrees or messages, it's all about the number of people there. From the beginning, it's with the number of people on the square that's concerned. I don't know if we're going to do any insurance or how we do that. We have a lot to think about. We appreciate what everybody has said today, because if we talk about application, not permitting, right? Whether or not we should know who's there or what kind of group. We know that insurance could be burdensome. Maybe we don't require insurance, so we waive insurance. But every other group that gets together has insurance. So we have a lot to talk about and group. And this was part of that discussion. This wasn't, a lot of things that were said, I don't think any of us had any intention of shutting down free speech. One question we've had is whether it should be a PT Barnum in the town square or the town hall. That's our question. So we'll, I mean, my feeling is we'll take this, we'll deliberate on it. You know, take what everybody has said and think about it, but we're not trying to shut down free speech by any means. We're just worried about the number of people. That's why we, I'm just saying, hey, guys, we've had, we've given a chance. I'm just explaining why we, I'm explaining why we've done this. Give us a moment. Don't fight. The truth is, we've been worried about this for a long time. I saw people last week trying to pull out. The sidelines are questionable. It's just the number of people. But that's, that's all we're talking about. We're not trying to shut everything down. Just understand that's where we're coming from. Now, if you guys want to make any comments, we're probably going to take this, right? You want to make any comments?
No, I'm just going to make a comment. I'm a white woman. I like Long Westers in this town. I grew up in this town. It's the best town in the world. No one is trying to stammer free speech or all that. I'm for the safety of the people who are protesting out there, to give them the future to continue to do that. I was a big supporter of moving the Christmas tree to the municipal center, because there were just too many people on that green. I've seen people almost get run over by fire trucks or other vehicles on that green. The green is just too small for the large protests that are happening now. This board does not want to stand any protest for freedom of speech, and we will continue to support that. It's just mainly the safety issue. Now, yes, there was discussion about permits and insurance, but nothing of that has been debated. We listen to you all, and we will take that into consideration.
Yeah. No, I, I, listen, ladies and gentlemen, listen, we should be getting into the debate, but the intention from the beginning was that we felt like the municipal center was a great place because of the size. And there's no issue with being surrounded by cars driving around a small green with a lot of people on it. That's been the biggest issue. That's it. And that's what we're talking about. Listen, I'm not going to get into debate. We can talk about this afterwards. But I came out very nicely and said I wanted to talk about it, because we had a lot of complaints in businesses. And that same day, when we got the red light. The same day, I had a plate from a family whose son was running on the green. No, it was true, Dave, but I'm just saying it happened, and it's a hot spot. Common sense says it's an issue. That's why we're having this conversation. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate it. My goodness, we appreciate everybody having their feet. But if you want to, if you just want to keep, listen, we are going to Listen, we're, we're, we are going to talk about this as. I, I make a motion every table this to make future meetings. All in favor? Aye. Motion table. We're gonna get on with our meeting now. We've given you a lot of time this evening. We're gonna work together. We have a cutting. Let's have it. No, let's have us another time, please. Let's move on with our. Please. I, I called, I called this to the table. Yeah, that's, I think it's Dr. Harper here.
Hey, Charles. There is a meeting going on here.
The board of selectmen is continuing their meeting. Best to talk outside.
Maybe you should stay and watch how things work. Thank you.
Respect.
Do what you can.
Respect. Here, try to run a meeting.
Come on.
Okay. Right. You guys be okay taking this?
I've got a problem. With this. It doesn't really matter. He said that's okay. Okay. So, so the highway garage. It is, yeah. So we can table this to a special. Alright.
That's got to be special.
Right, right. So we can do it. We're gonna need two. Does maybe a special?
There's no time like.
Right, there's no time. Interesting. So with that, I move that we. Take the public side. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Okay, next up we have a consideration approval of library boiler bears.
Yeah. So you should have three programs. One for a pitch from there. She did a question for range. As one, um, control there, thirty six thousand. So the situation at the libraries, there's four boilers. Uh, two of them are down. So all these. Two of the four. Part of the reasons for that, uh, why. For wireless people's. Above the community environment, they have to run boilers for the summer. A lot of the time. So. We would recognize always there's a lot of bitter, uh, not only because it's low as people, but also because, uh, we think this was the cash proposal. One of the reasons for that is that we're just trying to sell us the boilers. They were interested in finding a best solution. In fact, they were the only attractor that helped out our seat population. Basically, that idea behind us could be a lot. These two boilers were down and essentially. Too frequently, so the controls, if you will, probably exposed as well as by. So we're gonna re-optimize the season's population to. Do you have a consent, this bit is on a lawyer from August, most significant. I, um. I didn't, I don't, I don't know if I would exaggerate it. Um, I didn't, no. Um, I. We should follow it. Yeah, I think that's a good reason. We should probably go to a convention. You know, still get. This is change. I think it's time. More than forty. A lot. And he's doing work, they're doing work. I've been discussing forty two. We're gonna get it done. Yeah. You know, it's. Uh, I would make another motion that we improve the amount of electricity for the two thousand. Or, uh, library experience by B and B here.
Second. Okay. Turn mine's all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, well, we still have you. Consideration approval of emergency authorization for lots of funding for downtown April repair.
Okay, this. I don't have any additional, especially of. To describe the process, essentially what. Did was we get around that analysis of hitters and identified people with twenty four horsepower success. Uh, silence is true passes. We identified those and we got the. Estimate, the estimate on that, thirty six thousand, I don't count that. Um, which is why I'm protecting it. Um, we're taking it. So it's nice. So essentially this would not, um. Uh, if we get this O C authorization, which is on this form here to die by the time I'm involved, probably like most current time. Although, uh, frankly, I believe that you have a fun one. So I think motions to, to the proof that getting this O C and then that all of the last dispute and this first light which we decided is formed. Uh, forty two. I guess it's, uh, I have three bottom boxes.
So let me go over for just a little bit of understanding. When we spend most of money, uh, it's usually within our cap. What it does allow is for elected body to do an emergency authorization, emergency request to take. So that's what we're doing is we're gonna petition up there with this form and say, give my list to the emergency because it was not on our plan. I guess. Okay. Um, so with that, um, I make a motion. That the board selected through the first likely Jamie Carter to. Apply for emergency authorization to mostly probably for the downtown April repairs. The amount of thirty six thousand.
Thirty six thousand and four dollars.
I would not see. Actually, I'm a terrible. Yeah. Um, do I second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
While I'm standing.
Yeah. Yeah, we, well, we have to do a quick consideration approval, sand.
Sand, right? That too.
Here for all of it. Okay. Um, so what we have before us is a, uh, the maintenance procurement committee. The lowest bid for the sand with stone construction, excuse me, stone construction company for twenty nine dollars and sixty cents per ton. The minimum of delivery of twenty five tons. Uh, the next bid that we received was for thirty nine dollars and six, excuse me, sixty cents. Uh, so obviously, uh, our stone construction is still ready to go. Any questions on?
That's just each time you call, you have to agree to twenty five times. Yes. Obviously, you.
If any comments and discussion. Okay. With that, I would accept a motion to approve the recommendation of the firm committee. Uh, to accept a bid of stone construction co for twenty nine dollars and sixty cents per tonne, twenty five times minimum. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next up is to be a consideration and approval for. I'll talk next year. Oh, yeah. Consideration approval for upgrades in highway circuits truck. Uh, for a poly blade frame assembly and emergency lights package. You're on I one. Did you want to mention anything? Cause I know this has been, um, yeah. Those who. Should have that with twenty four. Yeah, sorry. Seven dollars, seven sixty cents is for the apron plow. It's the same, uh, plow as the previous. Uh, I recommend turn it up. So it should allow you to do that operation as we've got on the pass. Uh, with the new truck and other estimates for the emergency lights. For the seven. Uh, now there are a couple of things I'll shed light on. First off, you know, we've been talking about the plow for some time. The, the plow package that we had on an old truck, we figured out would not work on the new truck. And also the physical light system, please Fisher, would not work. So that's why we've come here. I know that we had some informal discussions that we'd shared for finance with that highway garage, checked it out. So if we're not expecting any problems, when we make the motion, we'll be taking this out of C M R. So gentlemen, any questions? With that, I would, I would accept a motion to. What's that? Yeah, I think we should. I'm gonna say I accept a motion. To take from, to recommend to the board of finance, take seven thousand, seventy six dollars and forty cents. For a plow blade accessories for the. Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries. I would accept a motion. Here for you guys here. To recommend to the board of finance that they take two thousand, thirty eight dollars, eighty three cents with C and R. For lighting for the. Superintendent's truck. Check. Our, I give the motion. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next up, uh, we, we have a, this is something we actually don't even have to do, but we have a recommendation. I was gonna handle this. For working these gift to close the. Put it at the trick or treat street at Winterfest. Uh, this actually went through the police commission, was approved. It's their purview, uh, but I definitely, I wanted to bring it up as an information I just want you guys to know. So there's no need actually. Um, next up, uh, consideration and approval of an image we installed as kind works mural in this building and any other conditions. We found for you last year. Yes. A one. Okay. Okay. So if you see on the back, we, we had this conversation once before. Uh, we have two options before. First off, we were talking about, we were gonna do it, we did agree on the back of the building. Well, it's thin. Uh, we have the de kind flowers or de kind fall. So it is our illustrious duty to decide which one we think.
That.
I like. So Rich, I think you like the flowers without. No, we need, I think we need an unanimous decision. I mean, what you think? It's great. That a lot of cats. Alright, so, uh, with that, I would accept a motion to, uh, allow the person I can coordinate for installation as a kind works mural. Or the fall for the back of municipal center.
Just a question, when we talked visually, we talked about on the other, this is on the back, it's amazing, but we talked about on the back of the. Uh, office, so we, we go into the.
This is, this is, right? This is, you see.
Um, yeah, the ramp is over here for the. Yeah. We, we were talking.
We looked at the back of the office building that.
Yeah, I see. Was on the back of the office.
There was issues. Well, that was issues. We did nothing about it.
Okay.
But you're right, but I think it will be because of the issue. Yeah. Yeah, that was an area where that we, in our honorable contention, we had questions. Yeah, we didn't want it. When you're over going on, we're gonna have to.
Yeah. Well, because we have had told the guy to check.
Right.
Yeah, so that's what, probably what I got.
That's the area where we're having.
Issue with.
So that's why we. Okay. Uh, so then I, I did, uh, I made the motion, wait a second. Any further discussion? The wild cats? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pushing carries. Okay, finally, on the agenda, we actually have two, two items for executive session. Um, the discussion of seventy four South Street is the Smith property and one fifty nine Luden Avenue. So. State the direction that it's on. So, uh, we're, we're doing a, uh, executive session due to FOI exemption for the record. It's the management actions, one action, two hundred six, and the discretion of this section of the site or lease for sales purchase of real estate. So that's why we're doing an executive session. With that, uh, what we do at the White and Janus Christianity. Town attorney Melanie, um, Brian, Mary Churchill.
We're leaving.
We both want to go, okay, cause that was. Uh, Ashley, let's, let's watch you stay in. And then everybody else unfortunately will have to go out for the second session. Thank you.
All set, Dan.
Okay, so, uh, my call is getting back to order. It's now nine fifty eight E F. Getting back to the second session. From our discussion, uh, I ruled that we allow the first link of Jamie Carter to, to deliver a letter of intent regarding the purchase of. Uh, to negotiate the. Make sure I say it correctly. Negotiate the letter of intent, purchase of what. That was it. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. We have a business to come before. Well, there's one more motion. All in favor?
Aye.